So we're going to take a scripture text from the Psalms. And I will read Psalm 119 from verses 1 through 8. I love this Psalm because it is very close to anyone who is crazy about the Bible. It was a crazy about the word of God, anyone who is crazy about knowledge and deepening the knowledge of our faith and not just practicing or observing obligations just for the sake of obligations, but also seeking to understand more and more and deepen our understanding and so that we can do it, we can practice our faith with meaning. So I am going to read that as a beginning of our session today. Let us begin in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. "Blessed those whose way is blameless, who walk by the law of the Lord. Blessed those who keep God's testimonies, who seek God with all their heart. They do no wrong; they walk always in God's ways. You have given them the command to observe your precepts with care. May my ways be firm in the observance of your statutes. Then I will not be ashamed to ponder all your commandments. I will praise you with sincere heart as I study your righteous judgments. I will observe your statutes; do not leave me all alone." Lord, we want to thank you that you have not left us all alone, that you give us the opportunity to come together to discuss your word. Thank you for giving us this moment once again. Bless us, and may we receive you through our study. And we make this prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. So my dear friends, we are still talking about the teachings and preaching and healing of Jesus Christ, Jesus Christ's work. And today we would like to talk about two things, Jesus's understanding of two important things. The first one is fasting, and the second is the Sabbath. In our case, as Christians, I know, we all know that our Sabbath is, our Sabbath falls on Sunday, okay? But for the Jewish people and for Jesus Christ, when he was working, when he was ministering, there was nothing, Sunday was not the Sabbath. The Sabbath was the seventh day. In those days, they don't have Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. They didn't have these words. These words came later on. But they called, they mentioned the first day of the week, the second day of the week, the third day of the week, the fourth day of the week, the fifth day, the sixth day, the seventh day, the eighth day. Remember that they have eighth day because eighth day is, so if Monday, Sunday is the first day, then the next Sunday is the eighth day. And that's very, very important. And a lot of, a lot of traditional societies still do that. If you go to my country, we do that too. When a child is born, the child is never brought outside to the public. The child stays indoors until the eighth day, the next, if the child is born on Monday, until the next Monday, the child stays indoors. And on the eighth day, the child is brought out. That's what we call the ritual is called outdooring. You bring the child outdoors. And then the child is introduced to the entire clan, entire family, the bigger family, not just brothers and sisters, but uncles and nieces and nephews and all these people come and they all welcome the child and they give the child names. And, and that's a naming ceremony also. So that's very close. African traditions are very close to the Hebrew tradition. And so in Israel also, they did the eighth day is their naming, the day that they do the naming of the child. John the Baptist went through that, all of them came, went through that. Eighth day is the day that they named the child and claimed the child. So, so that's the way they counted days in the week. So the week for, for, for most of these people is eight days, not seven days. The seventh day ends the week, but eighth day is like a new fresh, a new beginning. We'll come to that. So Sabbath, we're going to look at Sabbath and its understanding among the people of Israel and, and how that became Sunday in our Christian perspective. But we'll start with fasting. So again, we are saying, what would Jesus do? Okay? This is what our main topic is. What would Jesus do? What would Jesus do about fasting? What would Jesus do about the Sabbath? And what Jesus would do is what we have to do, how we have to see the Sabbath, how we have to see fasting. And those are the texts that I offered to you about the Gospels, the Gospels that have something about fasting, Luke chapter 5, verse 33 through 39, Mark chapter 2, verse 18 through 22, Matthew 9, 14 to 17. But Luke story is the longest, so we're going to take that one. We're going to read that one and then, and then work with that one. And then when you take the Sabbath, it is Matthew's story that is the longest. So you have, we're going to take Matthew's story. They have Mark and you have Luke as well. And I'm very happy that we are taking these topics because in a couple of weeks, we are going to hear this a lot, fasting and, and observance of the law and our Christian practices will be kicked to high gear. In Lent, we intensify our Christian practices. So let us start with the, about fasting. And we're going to take that text, Luke chapter 5, verses 33 through 39. And I have it here that I want to read quickly and then, and then take you through verse by verse to, to see what Jesus, what comes out as Jesus is thinking about this topic. So, so Luke chapter 5, 33 through 39. "And they said to him, 'The disciples of John fast often and offer prayers; and so do the disciples of the Pharisees. But yours eat and drink.' And Jesus said to them, 'Can you make wedding guests fast while the bridegroom is with them? The days will come when the bridegroom is taken away from them, and then they will fast in those days.'" He told them a parable also. "No one tears a piece from a new garment and puts it upon an old garment. If he does, he will tear the new, and the piece from the new will not match the old. And no one puts new wine into old wineskins. If he does, the new wine will burst the skins, and it will be spilled, and the skins will be destroyed. But new wine must be put into fresh wine skins. And no one, after drinking old wine, desires new, for he says, 'The old is good.'" So that's, that's a beautiful story that, that shows us Jesus is thinking about fasting. And, and so let us, let us first interpret those verses. And then, and then I will tell you what, what, what is the implication for us today. So we start from verse 33, right from verse 33, we hear that the disciples of John the Baptist, the disciples of John the Baptist and the disciples of the Pharisees, they fast, they were fasting, they were going physically about food. But Jesus's disciples did not fast. In the other texts, you will hear that it is Jesus, it is the Pharisees themselves and John the Baptist fast, but Jesus does not fast. So somehow Jesus, Jesus was like breaking the law. All what we say breaking the law is not, Jesus is not concerned about this kind of pious observance. So that's very important. That is established right there that John the Baptist disciples fast, Jesus's disciples did not fast. And so then you begin to ask, why were they not fasting? Why was Jesus's disciples not, why did Jesus not tell his disciples to fast? And, and so the stage is set for us to begin to dig in. We can ask a lot of questions about that, but we have to keep reading in order to, to, to answer that question. Why do they not fast? Why did Jesus's disciples not fast? And so in verse 34, right there, you have, Jesus introduces the reason, and he uses the bridegroom, he uses a wedding feast to explain why his disciples do not fast. He says, and the question is, can you, can you make the wedding guests fast whilst the bridegroom is with them? In this case, Jesus makes himself the bridegroom. Or if you want to think about it deeper, Jesus makes himself, God is the bridegroom. And that image is used a lot in the Bible, in this, especially in the New Testament. God is looked at as the bridegroom, and the people Israel was the bride. So also Jesus is looked upon a lot as the bridegroom, and the church is the bride. Okay? So, and that needs to be unpacked a little bit more. So, so keep this in your mind. Jesus now has made himself the bridegroom. And why? It's because we, we need to know a little bit about, about how people married in those days, right? You saw that, that parable of the, of the 10 virgins. Five of them were considered foolish, the five were wise. And, and the wedding, why the five, five were wise was that they knew that they have to be with the bride because when the bridegroom comes, the bridegroom is going to take the bride, not the bridesmaids, not anybody else. The bridegroom is coming for the bride. Okay? So if you are wise, if you're a bridesmaid, if you are wise, you will stick to the bride. You will be where the bride is all the time. Because when the bridegroom, if you want to be part of the wedding, you want to be part of the enjoyment, you want to enjoy the party and all that, you will do your best to stick with the bride. Wherever the bride goes, you go there. You make sure you are by the bride. Because if you separate yourself from the bride and the bridegroom comes and you are not there, tough luck. I mean, you lose, right? So you do everything that you can to stick with the bride. If you think about the church as the bride, for instance, you stick with the, with the church, you stay in the church. You don't, you don't, you don't go, you don't build a church around somebody, you don't let it, you don't get driven away, go away because you disagree with something or you are, you are, you're, no, you stick to the church. Because when Christ comes, he's coming, not, not for you, he's coming for you within the church, coming for the community. So stay in the community. That's one lesson out there. But that's the way they were marrying. What they, the way they were marrying is that the bride stays in her home, the bridegroom comes from his home and comes to the bride's home the day that the wedding takes place after everything has been prepared. The day the bridegroom comes, nobody knows. It's like a surprise, surprise, surprise. So the thing is, the day itself, they know, but the time that the bridegroom comes is what you don't know. Okay? So many times this thing is, is used to tell us how to stay awake because you don't know when you will die. You don't know when Jesus will come back to take you. So the best thing is to stay awake. Okay? And so stay awake is to be with the bride. And, and so in that story, the story of the 10 virgins, the five of them who were foolish, they brought a lamp, but they had no oil, extra oil with them. The wise one, they were wise because when they brought their lamp, they took extra flask of oil with them because they knew that maybe the bridegroom might delay. If the bridegroom delays, then the lamp, lamp is going off, they can replenish with the, with the extra oil. That is the wisdom of that. But the story tells us how marriages are done, that the bridegroom will come and then take the, the bridesmaid, whoever is with the bridesmaid, they, they win, they go into the marriage and they enjoy. Once they were the bridegroom, when the bridegroom comes, we're all happy. If the bridegroom is not there, it's a mourning. I mean, there's no marriage if the bridegroom is not there. The bride alone cannot celebrate the marriage. So the presence of the bridegroom is a joyful thing. You cannot be sad if the bridegroom is there. There's no way you can be sad if the bridegroom is there. Because if the bridegroom comes, that's when we know the marriage, the feast begins. So this is where Jesus is taking it from, is taking it from their own tradition and asking them a question. Can you make the guests feel sad or fast when the bridegroom is with them? When the bridegroom is with them, that's a time for feasting, eating and drinking and making merry. That's, that is the sign that the bridegroom is there. So if Jesus is the bridegroom and the disciples are with Jesus, they are with Jesus, they're Jesus's companion, they cannot fast. The reason why you fast is to mourn the absence of the bridegroom. That's the reason why you fast. You fast in order to yearn and hunger and thirsty, I'm looking, I'm yearning, I am mourning the, the absence of, of Jesus in my life. I'm mourning, I am, I am, I am disciplining myself to make room, to, to whatever I can do to bring Jesus into me. That's why we fast. That's what Jesus is telling them now. This is a new teaching for them because for them, that is why John the Baptist disciples were fasting because John the Baptist is, is not a Christian. It was not, John the Baptist prepared the way for Christ, but he himself was not post resurrection. He wasn't the, at the, it was after the resurrection that people followed, became Jesus, followers of Jesus, you know? So John the Baptist himself, he just was a, he prepared the way. So his disciples have not made it to Christ yet. So they have to fast. The Pharisees also, they were in the Old Testament, they have not accepted Jesus yet. They don't have the bridegroom, so they got to fast. Okay? So that is what Jesus was trying to explain over there. And then, so he says, he goes on on verse 35 and says, "The right days are coming when the bridegroom will not be with them physically. And in those days, those are the right days that they will fast." Now that tells us a lot, that there are times that are coming when we don't have Jesus fully in our lives. And right now, we still don't. We do have Jesus, but we don't have Jesus fully in us. You can explain that, why we do wrong, we do wrong things. When Jesus is fully with us, you can do no wrong. When Jesus finally, when the kingdom of heaven, which is heaven again, that's also heaven because Jesus, when Jesus is present fully, there will be no more injustice, there will be, there will be nothing like what we are seeing here. And that's what we are describing as, as when we die, when we, when we die and we are fully in Jesus, that's a reality. That's why we believe that the reality after death is a feast, a banquet, which we try to, to, to kind of represent a little bit in the Eucharist. It's a banquet that we are hoping that we will get to when we finally shed all these things, shed our wives, shed our husbands. Because we are going to shed all of that. You're going to shed all of that. You're going to shed the church too. The church too is going to be shed. You have to, you're going to shed the church, you're going to shed the priests, you're going to shed everything, shed your country, shed your, your, your family, all that. And you become a full spirit, an angel. Like Jesus says, they are like angels. And you fully become a spirit like Jesus, who is a spirit, like God, who is spirit. That is the different banquet. I don't know everything about it. I have an inkling, I have studied a little bit about it, but I don't really, I only believe it, I accept it. It makes sense to me that, that this world is very, very, it's not perfect. So there got to be that perfect world. And that perfect world will come when we shed this, everything that we have here. So, so those are the times. And, and so that's why we still fast as Christians, even though we have Jesus, we don't have Jesus perfectly. We don't have Jesus fully. And so we have to dedicate time to fast. And why are you fasting? You are fasting to, to have more of Jesus, to have more of Jesus. So fasting is not only taking something out of yourself. Okay? Now, now you're beginning to get deeper into fasting. Fasting is not just getting away from something, it's also putting the desire for Jesus more into yourself, desire Jesus more. Okay? Desire to have Jesus more. And that, that, that changes the whole perspective of fasting from the Old Testament to the New Testament. And so that's what Jesus was telling them. And then the last part, which is verses 36 through 39, Jesus gives that parable, parable about old cloth and old wine and old wineskin versus new cloth, new wine, new wineskin. What he was making there is trying to compare old, old, the old way of relating with God with the new way of relating with God. Okay? The old way of relating with God was more physical, was more like, fasting means you have to actually go away from food. And, but the new way that Jesus is introducing is, is, is more about finding something valuable so that I can develop something spiritual instead. I am going away from, from, from food, not just for food's sake. I am not eating meat, not just for meat, eating meat's sake. I have to understand why am I going away from meat? It's because meat gives me joy and therefore I want to a little bit cut down so that I can have Jesus, I can have Jesus with me. I can develop the value of patience, the value of, of sacrifice, the value of doing something, the value of, of forgiveness. That is the reason why I fast because forgiveness, patience, kindness, joy, and all those things, that's Jesus, that's spiritual, that's what you want to have. That is why you, you, you abstain from something. So he was making that comparison, you don't put old cloth on, on new cloth, or you don't put old wine into, into a, a, a new wineskin. You don't put a, a, and so you, you put new wine into new wineskin and old wine into old wineskin in order for it to match. So this is Jesus's, this is the interpretation of the text. Let's now take the Sabbath also, because these two texts are related. Okay? They are related. And that is why we're going to take these two, this also, and then we'll come back and finish up with the meaning for us of both. So this one, we're going to take Matthew about the Sabbath. We're going to take Matthew, chapter 12, verses 1 through 8. "At that time Jesus went through the grain fields on the Sabbath. His disciples were hungry, and they began to pluck heads of grain and to eat. But when the Pharisees saw it, they said to him, 'Look, your disciples are doing what is not lawful to do on the Sabbath.' He said to them, 'Have you not read what David did when he was hungry and those who were with him, how he entered the house of God and ate the bread of life, the bread of presents, which it was not lawful for him to eat, nor for those who were with him, but only for the priests? Or have you not read in the law how on the Sabbath the priests in the temple profaned the Sabbath and are guiltless? I tell you, something greater than the temple is here. And if you had known what this means, I desire mercy and not sacrifice, you would not have condemned the guiltless. For the son of man is lord of the Sabbath.'" The son of man is lord of the Sabbath. Okay? So, so let's go through that also, the verses 1 to 2. We hear that the disciples of Jesus again, they are culprits here. The disciples of Jesus are always making, they're always breaking the law, they're breaking the mosaic law. "They were, they were walking in a grain of field, and they were plucking the, the ears of grain to eat." Now, we'll come to understand everything about Sabbath, but Sabbath day, it's ruled that you don't work. So the plucking of the grain is work. It's considered work to be plucking a grain. On Sabbath day, you don't do anything. So plucking the grain to eat is considered working, which is against Sabbath. Okay? I would be saying Shabbat because that is the right term. The English make it Sabbath, but the, the real word is Shabbat. Okay? And the Shabbat rest is to, so they, to satisfy their hunger. But here is what is important, I want to point out to you. Why they were doing, they were plucking, why they were breaking the law? Why were they doing, working? They were working so that they can satisfy their hunger. They were hungry. That is why they did that. So keep that in mind. They didn't just break the law for breaking his sake. They broke the law in order to... They broke the law in order to, to heal themselves, to satisfy their hunger. They were hungry. You have to feed the hungry. You have the law to feed the hungry, and the law not to, not to work on the Sabbath. Which one are you going to do? That's, that's the thing that I would work here. You got, you got, you got, you got hunger, somebody is hungry. And then, and then there's a law that says, ah, ah, today is the Sabbath. So you shouldn't, you shouldn't do anything. Which one are you going to keep? Which one takes precedence? Which one is much deeper, okay? So Jesus is going after something here. So it says, they, they did that in order to satisfy their hunger. And Jesus came in to explain to them that this is not new. What the disciples were doing to violate the Sabbath, or to break the law, the letter of the law, to satisfy the spirit of the law, or to satisfy something that could kill the human being, the human soul, to, to, to help that, that is not new. And so, he pointed out to, to six hundred years before, before that time, almost six hundred or seven hundred years before that, in David's time, King David, the favorite, the favorite king of Israel, the beginning, the son of David. Jesus was known as the son of David. The line of David, from whom the Messiah came. David, David was the king of Israel. He did exact same thing, he broke the law in order to satisfy hunger of people. He, so Jesus pointed that to them and says, David went to the temple, and there's always a bread that is reserved. You can, you can look at exactly like that in, let's say, the church. Inside, in a tabernacle, there is a bread, that is called shoe bread. In, in the temple, they call it shoe bread, show bread, bread that is shown. The bread of the present, the bread symbolizes God's presence. Same thing we have in a, in a, in a Catholic church, that we have the tabernacle, we have the Eucharist in there. And, and for us, laypeople can go in there, can go to the tabernacle, and, and, and distribute communion, on the permission of the pastor, but, but they, it's not like they cannot go there, because we live in the Christian era. But in those days, you wouldn't dare go take that bread and moreover, eat it. Only the priests could eat that bread, okay? And even they don't eat it just anytime. There's a time that they have to go in there and eat that bread. But David went in there with his soldiers, with his fellow soldiers, and they took the bread and satisfied their, their hunger, okay? And then, Jesus also mentioned something that they were practicing, which makes them Pharisees hypocritical, is the fact that the priests do really break a lot of laws on the Sabbath by profaning the, 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 the Sabbath. And they, they normally are not, they are given a pass. They are given a pass. So Jesus was actually bringing them to, 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 to justice in this case. So Jesus gave them precedence, says, what my disciples are doing, they are on the right path, because they, David, there's a precedence. David shows, showed us how to do it. But you guys have just remained conservative and remain like that without moving on and explaining what the Sabbath means. So, Jesus continues in verses six to seven. He tells them that there's something greater than the temple here. If the priests could do that, if, if David could go to the temple and do that in the temple, how much more right now, when we have something bigger than the temple? And what is Jesus referring to as bigger than the temple? Himself, himself. Remember that when Pilate asked him, remember that one time he told the people, "Destroy this temple, and I will rebuild it in three days." Destroy, he was talking about himself. They thought, they, they even mocked him. They said, "You will destroy the temple, look at this whole temple, you will build it in three days." But the Bible says, he was talking about himself. He was referring to the fact that, "You kill me, and in three days, I will rise from the dead." That's what he meant. So, so he says, there is something greater here, telling the Pharisees, "There's something greater here than the temple, and that thing is me. I am the one, I am the new temple, I am the new arrangement, I am the new covenant, I am the new relationship with God. I'm the way to live a new relationship, not in the old way. You will not have to go to a temple anymore, you have to live in me, you have to come to me." And that temple, and then, and then he tells them, "I desire mercy, not sacrifice. In the new relationship, in the new relationship, it is mercy." But the sacrifice that Jesus is talking about here is not the sacrifice of, let's say, sharing with people. The sacrifice Jesus is talking is the Old Testament sacrifice of sheep and goat and lambs, that's what he's referring to. It's supposed to move on to a new sacrifice, mercy, forgiveness. That's the new, that, those are some of the things that characterize the new way of relating with God, the new way of observing the Sabbath, okay? So then, so, so then he finishes with the fact that, "So I am, Christ is the Lord of the Sabbath, the new creation." Why I'm saying is a new creation will come in the next slide. The new Shabbat, I am the new, new Sabbath. I command the new Sabbath. So, so if you have me, you would have observed the Sabbath. The Sabbath, the reason why you observe the Sabbath is to be like me, is to come to me. So now, let us look at these two things, from Sabbath, first of all, the Sabbath, from Sabbath to the Christian Sunday, okay? From Sabbath to the Christian Sunday. So Sabbath is the seventh day. In the Hebrew, it's called Shabbat, which means to stop or to rest. Okay, that's what it means. Shabbat means to stop or to rest. And it comes from, from their understanding of how, their understanding of how the world was created, how God created the world, okay? They were talking about the final day of the, of that week of creation, when, on the final day, on the seventh day, God rested. God stopped, stopped creation, okay? God has finished creation. So that is, that is the final, that is the final day of the Jewish week. The next week will be, will be counted as the first day of the week, which again, is also the eighth day. But there is a meaning to this, that at the final time, God rested. And because of that, every Jewish person must also rest. That's the law. If you ask any Jewish person, "Why do you rest? Why don't you work on, 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 on the seventh day? Why don't you work on Shabbat?" You say, "God." For them, God obeyed the Sabbath too. God observed the Sabbath. The Jewish people are very, very critical about that. I have this little book called The Shabbat, The Sabbath. That's written by a Jewish mystic, Jewish rabbi, a mystic, who says that God obeyed the Sabbath. So even God obeyed the Sabbath, everyone, there's no one who is above that law. Everyone must obey the Sabbath. So that is the, the thing that is put there, and they are very particular about it. They are very, this Sabbath is very strong, you can be killed, you can be put to death if you violate it. That is why it was a, a struggle with Jesus. So as I said, the source is creation, creation. When, when God created the world, Shabbat began. So what the Jewish people, how they were celebrating this was that, they will start, because of the last day, they will start the night before. So Shabbat begins the evening, the evening of Saturday, for us now, Saturday, but it begins in the eve of the seventh day. And, and, and that's when they start preparation. So that, in the evening of Friday, they start what we call the preparation. If you read, if you read when Jesus was crucified, there was something, they had to, they had to take the bodies down, because they had to do the preparation. The preparation is not to prepare Jesus' body. The preparation is to prepare for the Sabbath. They don't want to have the bodies there on the Sabbath day. So, so, so they prepare, and then, the next day, they carry on, they, they celebrate the Sabbath. And they do, they, they don't work, they only read the Torah. You'll read the Torah, they'll pray, and, and just rest. So these are the main, main things that they do. They meditate, they reflect on, 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 on the law of the Lord. But as time went, went on, the season to work also ceased. It ceased with time. Today, you have Jewish people, a lot of Jewish people do something. They do something, they, they actually cook, so that's, that's work, okay? But the early Christians, when Jesus left his disciples, the early Christians were also observing the seventh day. They observed the seventh day all the way until, until at some point, when they began to link, they were linking the resurrection of Jesus to the first day of the week. The first day of the week will be Sunday, okay? But they were linking, the, 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 the resurrection is like a new life, a new life. So what the Christians were doing is, they were like, you know what? It is better to link the resurrection to, to the, the, the first day of the week, when things start, fresh start, fresh day, fresh life, okay? So it made sense, the Christians were the one who made that change. And, and, and they linked it to Sunday, and so they began to observe, to do some of the things on the Sabbath instead, on the first day of the week, to make sense for them. If you read those texts, you will see, like the breaking of the bread. The breaking of the bread, they were, they were doing it before, they were doing it on the Sabbath. And then, and then when they linked, because the breaking of the bread is the sacrifice of Jesus, it is the shedding of Jesus' blood, and, and, and all the things that Jesus did to save us, it is their passover. So, so when they linked the resurrection to the first day of the week, that's when they began to use, to, 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 to make Sunday their day. And from 150 AD, that is when it was actually popularized. It was, it was really adopted. It was adopted as the day for Christians. And, and Christian worship on Sunday was popularized from 150 AD. And what they did was, when they gather, they will gather first, they will read from the apostle, they will read the acts of the apostles, the things that apostles did, because all of them were documented then. They will read that from the apostle, they will read the prophets from the Old Testament, they will read from the prophets, they will read the apostles. And then someone will give instructions, they will give instructions on the, on the text, and pretty much like the liturgy of the word that we do. And then, and then they will do prayers, intercessions for people, pray for people. Whenever they gather, they pray for people. And then, they will take bread and wine, they will bless the bread and wine, they will offer thanksgiving to God for the bread and wine, and then they will share it, okay? So, we, we hear from an ancient Christian, Justin, was an ancient Christian, who wrote in a book called First Apology, First Apology, number fifty, sixty-seven. He tells us about how they were, they were observing the Sunday observance. So, there's no particular time, there's that, that Sunday actually came. It, it just, it just was, came out of the fact that the resurrection was linked to the first day of the week. That's the understanding of the community. And they started practicing it, and it became popularized, became popularized among Christians until they actually formally adopted it as the day of, of their, their, their celebration. So, these two stories about the Sabbath and fasting, the deepest goal, the deepest meaning of that is what I want you to consider. It's about making goals and means, means and goals, okay? If you consider fasting and observing every day, let's take a fasting. What is the means? What is the means of fasting? The means of fasting is, is a physical abstinence from food, from pleasure, anything that gives you pleasure, drink, even taking, on, 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 if you want to fast, you don't just have to take something out of you, but you can also take in something that's taking a new challenge, a new good work, something good. So you can, you can rather add than subtracting. Fasting doesn't have to do with just subtracting, because the goal of fasting is to have Jesus in you. The goal of fasting is to have Jesus in you. So you want to be Christ-like, more Christ-like. And Christ-like is not just taking something out of your life for, for, for just the fancy of it. If you, you don't have to do that, or if you cannot do that, or if you are sick, or if there's something wrong, if you need to eat that meat, you need to eat meat in order to get protein or get something, you should eat meat. You should go ahead and eat the meat, you are exempt. So the church's laws help us to streamline these things. We do not require people, this is, this is a blanket rule that was made. We do not require people sixty, sixty-five, I think, sixty-five older, we don't, you are exempt. If you are beyond that, you are exempt, you are not required to, 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 to fast. Or to, if you do that, it is your own, your own. But remember that, if for one reason or the other, your medication, you are this, you are that, something, do not, do not do it, because if you do it and, and you get sick, that, yeah. God didn't do that. So, so remember that. You can do many other things and still achieve the goal. The means, the means is just things that are available to us. You can eat fish, or you can eat pork, anything that, 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 that makes, that makes you survive physically, because it's a physical food. But fasting is more geared towards spiritual goal. The goal is to have Jesus Christ. So that is it, to, to be a more loving person, a kind, a patient person. That is why you're fasting. So if you can go another route, that's between you and God, you can do that. And then, let's look at Sunday, the Sabbath. The means there is date, dates, and day, and week, or time, let's say, time, and seasons, and, yeah, that kind of chronology, chronological time. But, but God transcends chronological time. God, God God, God, God is above chronological time. God cannot be held within time. So you can pray to God and say, Lord, I want, I want a job and I want it this week. You can limit God to this week. God is not, it doesn't act within that time. But God is never late either. So God's time is timeless, it's an infinite God. So we use them rather in order to achieve a goal. So the mean, the goal here for the Sabbath, to observe the Sabbath. The goal here is being like God. The reason why they were observing Sabbath, because God did it. For them, that's how they come on it. God did it and God physically, the seventh, yeah. So we, but we Christians, we say Sunday, but we are not just held. If you, if you are not able to do it for genuine reason, for health reason, for some kind of reason that is genuine. God is not against you for that. God is not mad at you. God can meet you again in a mass, or God is in you, is in you. This is what Jesus brings to us. We just want to be like God, the image of God, a new life, the healing. If I can make somebody whole, remember the story of the good Samaritan? The priest was going to the temple. He was late, he was late, he was going to the temple and then saw this man beaten and dying by the roadside. But he looked at him, oh no, I'm late, I've got to go to the church. No. Jesus will say, that is your church right there. Once you meet that situation, healing someone, making someone whole. Jesus really struggled with the Pharisees a lot about this question. One time he told them, which of you on the Sabbath day, when your sheep falls into a pit. Will not go there and rescue the sheep on the Sabbath? Which of you will just allow your sheep to just die in a pit? You will not do that. So if you will not do that, why would I not heal somebody on the day of the Sabbath? Oh, they've struggled with Jesus a lot about this. So Jesus wanted to tell them that, that, that the things that we use, the days and the food and the drink and the clothing. And all these things that we use, they are means. And they are means to a goal. The goal is what we have to find. And sometimes when we know the goal, then there are many ways we can be very creative. There are many ways we can go to get to the goal. There are many, many paths, many, many different ways. If it makes sense to you, you can be a very creative Christian. And you can, you can really get to the bottom of it and it will make sense. It will make sense why you go and kneel, why you stand, why you bow, why you, why all these things? Why you go to mass? What is the mass? Why you go to confession? Why you do, all the things that we do, they are all means. We always have to have the goal in mind. And if we're just practicing something by itself, we are getting stuck to the means. And if you get stuck to the means, you don't get at the goal. And finally, what I will say here, that I've not, I've not written here, is it's just like the sacraments. The same thing like sacrament. The way I explained the sacrament to you some time ago is that the sacrament is a sign, but it's pointing to something else. So you have to follow what the sacrament is pointing to. You don't have to get stuck to the sacrament. The sacrament shows you to go to the reality. So in sacramental theology, we say we have signum, which is the sign, and we have res, which is the reality. Signum, res. So the signum points to the res. So water, water, we use water, we pour water on your head and all, we dunk you in a river. Or we dunk you in a bath and we say, God is making you a member of our community. Being a member of our community is the reality, is the goal. So if I can use a little cup of water and pour it on your head, that's you do it too. The important thing is the water. If I could touch your forehead with a little water, that's you do it too. If because of coronavirus, I cannot touch you. I could do a sign, the sign that you look at, and that could be a reality to you too. Can lead you there, can lead you to the reality. So it's very important that this is what, what Jesus is trying to teach over there. He uses Sabbath, an explanation of the Sabbath, and he uses an explanation of fasting. To teach us to always seek to be one with Him. That's the goal. In anything that we do, to be one with Him, the new relationship. And I'm going to stop there and, and we're going to, we're going to see a few questions. Two questions. Sixty years or older, you don't have to fast? Yes, thank you, thank you for, yeah. So sixty years or older, you are not bound to fast, you are not obligated. Now, let me say something about that too. Now, you are not obligated, but I've always taught Christians that obligation is the minimum. Obligation is the minimum below which no one should go. So when they give you, give us obligation, it is not the best you can do. Obligation is meant to help people who cannot help themselves. So sixty years, yes, but oh my God, sixty years over here in America where we have good health, healthcare and all that. Oh, you guys, ninety-year-olds are ready to move, so you can do more. Okay, so, so you have to be above average. Obligation is the minimum. You can stay above, you can go over it. So don't, don't get stuck with sixty years, don't take advantage of it. Oh, I'm sixty years, also, okay, I'm not going to, not going to fast. That, that would be taking advantage of. And God knows your mind too. God knows the reasons why we do all these things. In all this, God knows our intentions count the most. So if we have a good intention for it, we are coming for a good reason. It is, it is, it is holy, it is honorable, and it is beneficial to you. Then the second question is, the less of me, there is, the more room there is for Jesus with regard to fasting during Lent. Thank you. Yes, that's a good statement. The less, can you put it up again, please? Can you, can you bring it up? Yeah. The less of me there is, the more room there is for Jesus with regard to fasting during Lent. So, but I just want you to know that, that Jesus you are talking about, you should bring it home. Because we can, oh, Jesus, I'm Jesus, you don't know who Jesus is. But the Jesus you're talking about concretely is patience. Okay, so the more patience you have, the more Jesus you have. The more loving you are, the more Jesus you have. The more joyful, the more forgiving, forgiving you are. The more charitable, the more just, justice. All these qualities, the more you have them, the more you have Jesus and the less you are selfish. The less you are selfish. Less you are full of yourself, full of myself, I have to be less full of myself. And then I can have more patience, kindness, humility, all the qualities that have to do with Jesus. So thank you very much. We have a third question. Are there holy days of obligation for fasting during Lent? Yes, so we have two days. We have Ash Wednesday and we have Good Friday. Ash Wednesday, Good Friday. And then there are, maybe next time I'll talk more about, about abstinence, staying away from meat and all, and all those things. Setting abstinence, that's ascetic practice, but I'll speak about that another time. But the important days for fasting in the church is two. Ash Wednesday and Good Friday. How about using a squirt bottle for baptism during COVID times? Well, I got something that I can use, I got a gun, what a gun. And this time in Easter, if they let us come back, I'm going to use that in the church. But yes, that's another, you know, it's, it's part of our creativity that we stop. We all could not, if, if we want to obey the rules, if we're not, we don't have a spiritual meaning of the rule. Then we all should have gone to the river Jordan in order to baptize. But we don't have to do that because Jesus, because we are looking for the reality. So we can do it in America, we can do it in Livermore, we can do it at St. Charles. And it will be as good as, as it was done in the, in the river Jordan. So thank you all very much.